Ladies and gentlemen.
Yeah, sure.
Stand short please. I officially call order of last hand transportation video session for two for October fifteenth. Order and that's called.
Bill Plow is here, Ryan Adams here, Shannon Pennington here, Chris here, very high performance.
The question was one of the third time business approval of limits. Tell them to receive a copy of the minutes of tracking from seventeen to seventeen. In addition to the additions to the minutes of receiving. The law will be more than approved.
Most can approve.
And once approved again, they'll receive the second.
Yes.
Okay, in further discussion. Not aware of all.
Mary Harper?
Yes.
So Chris?
Yes.
Shannon Pennington?
Yes.
Ryan Adams?
Yes.
Bill Plow?
Yes.
Robert Clark?
Yes.
Robert Clark?
Yes.
Next one we're gonna do is a saddle level plan for seventeen fifty-five Lancaster Road. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that's a second one. A final thing is a crack, 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 stay, I'm sorry.
Yeah. We've got a couple things on this one, we'll get you back to that. You see it on the block, the detention easements have their, have their mark off on here. The reason is, if, and this is from experience, I don't just make stuff up, I've been there, but if the road department gets to get in there and work on that, or something, um, the kind of situation not, or the homeowner's not, whoever, they need to just use it and work on that, correct? Um, and the way that's kind of hashed, even if this is the scale, it's not really, it's not really, there's not enough detail there to show them where they can or where they can't go. If the homeowner just, you know, if we could help them on their property to work in that detention, or that detention area, they need that, they need that part, isn't he? Um, you know, the teachers, the language on here, or the detail for those lots, or it's like, uh, since seventy-three and seventy-seven, and then lots, uh, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, it looks like it just kind of stops on those property lines of twenty-five and twenty-nine. So again, that's just, it's not very clear where the detention area is. Is there a way to hash that, or put a detail like a, like a typical lot detail or something, the, the shelves and measurements of, of, of the boundary of that detention area?
Yeah, we, we got it, you know, highlighted, you know, dashed in there, but I can see where you might need something coming down inside block lines.
Yeah, I mean, it, it doesn't have any dimensions on it, I mean, I guess if this is the scale, like you go in and figure out, okay, I got forty feet to get in there and work, it'd be easier if it was, if it was more clear.
Okay.
Um, we, you were gonna add a tip of a corner lot, what do you think, you got a tip of a lot, uh, setback and whatnot, we were gonna add one for a corner lot as well, and I didn't see that on here.
Okay.
Uh, and then note one still shows lots one through eighty-seven instead of one through eighty-eight.
It's not that.
Note one?
Oh shit, yeah.
Lots one through eighty-seven, I believe it's eighty-eight lots. And then note twenty-eight, um, so this is one you added at my request. But it doesn't, it says that they shall not follow the typical street detail cross-section, but it doesn't tell them what to follow. So we need to direct them to this, uh, cross-section, the third one down, we need to label that, what that is. So that, that third cross-section down is the section of road that has the median in it, right? So let's make, note, note twenty-eight, refer it into that cross-section, and then label that cross-section.
It wasn't called detail number three, then?
Yeah, that's fine, and just label it up there as detail three, that tells them they might follow the normal, but it tells them where they need to go. Other than that, everything else was, uh, I got the letter credit for the bond, I got the, uh, danger restrictions, um, and that's all I had on it.
Was the water service right for our picture?
The loop?
Pulp for slides?
Yes, my subdivision, it is on here.
I didn't see it on the, on that list.
Uh, third one up from the bottom, nice can post-match.
Oh.
What are they gonna do, they gonna do, plus their four-five lot yet?
We wanna, we wanna make an option or the, 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 the.
Yeah, I think that, just, basically everything we just talked about, so, detention easements, lot detail for corner lot, note number one and note number twenty-eight, any signatures?
Any other discussion or comments? Get a call now on the fourth motion.
Well, I'm making motions that we approve, rectify the state, find a plant, continue to follow the, uh, corner lot detail, the repair of note one, and, uh, up twenty-eight is the laying of the road detail to follow, as well as the detention fine easements, uh, for the county road.
Grab one, put through, a second.
Six.
Real second, in further discussion. Not without all.
So Chris?
Yes.
Mary Harper?
Yes.
Ryan Adams?
Yes.
Bill Plow?
Yes.
Shannon Pennington?
Yes.
Shannon Pennington?
Yes.
Robert Clark?
Yes.
The next one we're gonna do is a saddle level plan for seventeen fifty-five Lancaster Road. Cut that through on.
Yes.
I think the only thing I understand on this, and, uh, with the landscaping plan for the additions, you add the landscaping, but if all of that existing authority out there.
It's all existing, yeah.
Yeah.
You have the same use zoning and stuff, just so we didn't think.
Respond.
Now, if I could mention that, now if you're, there's the caution light and the slower speed limit during school times, which I believe is a school mandate, uh, it's a state mandate that once the school's built, that will be put in. And so far away from, from the site, um, so the speed limit will be reduced. And yes, and as Chris mentioned, those, those trees along that, um, that are on our property will be demolished. Whether they put a, would do a caution light right there at Speedway Meadowbrook, could be suggested to them, but, um.
That's what I was thinking, you're asking about. So the warning flag of the school zone lights would be different, but as far as intersection light, I don't, I, I don't think that they would rec. They were probably, they would ask for that, that's about our recommendation, but we'll see what they, how they respond, but I. Yes, they will.
Yeah, I'm actually, you're actually talking about a square in that intersection off?
Well, the, the part on the east side has, hasn't been so much discussed and right here, they wanna take this section and tee it up into, to middle, if you don't mind, since I'm not a basketball player. Um, coming to here and, and swinging it out right here and maybe taking this whole triangle there and, and annexing it as county property and then making a T into Meadowbrook right there.
Kind of abandoning the last, if you like, couple hundred days of Meadowbrook.
I think there's, there's a little AT&T house, uh, building there, which is the only thing that would have to have in the east end. Yeah, and I think either just, just before or just after that, say teeing up and going straight or maybe even et cetera. And they've been looking into that, um, and I haven't, haven't really got, I have to me, I should remind you something there. Somewhere along there, teen, teen into Meadowbrook and getting your, and getting rid of that other very acute intersection altogether.
Yeah, that'd be a great idea.
Yeah, I, I've also, um, provided that a supplementary sketch that to the transportation cabinet to see what their thoughts are, cause we'd also have to get their approval for.
Sure.
There's supposed to cause of that where you, it does a more T intersection like Tony mentioned, but the problem is you have offsetting approaches as well. So it depends on how the ca, how, how the state, how they, how they will react and how they feel, what's the best, uh, they, they request they thinks widening Meadowbrook as it is is better or is adding a new approach that more, is more square to the road is better. So we'll see what they, how they responded as well.
We're in the same review process.
So all that work is gonna continue to develop and design as we bid this project. And so, and I'm just coming to you with the site and the building and at least the, the road widening, which we know we're doing, cause most of it is on their, on their property. The area where we could actually double the width of Meadowbrook along there is actually on their property.
Currently, the road's twelve, about twelve feet wide, we're proposing wide about double the size, so wide onto the school property. That's what we have control over, so, um, that is what we're, we, it'll be wide no matter what. If you have to have some length of traffic for all those, you know, all passes hard or coming in that, that secondary entrance.
Um, timeline, instructions are?
Well, they, uh, they are gonna bid, um, November fourteenth. Uh, of course, we're getting into bad weather, so I think most of that is to get all the shop drawings, all the equipment, get all the lead time, uh, long lead time equipment purchased, uh, a lot of stainless things of that nature. Um, they might try to do some setup on the site, prop, demolition, of course, there's some structures on the property, they're gonna get, uh, those demolished. Um, then try to do some staging, probably during the winter, if we have a real dry winter, uh, they'll, they'll push dirt. But you know what winters are typically like, so when, uh, we come out of the ground next spring, hopefully when it starts warming up, uh, they would work all through that, uh, summer and then into the next winter, that would be the, that would be the timeline.
About twenty six, uh, August twenty sixth for an opening?
Yes, yes, sir.
So this is a, this is a, a courtesy that the school board comes and presents this plan to y'all. Both required on your parties to an opportunity to present the plan in a public forum and, and take any suggestions and whatever it is what they will. So y'all have any more questions now, at the time of asking, but there won't be anything further.
I just have a quick question, the, uh, range calculations and, and all of those taken into account, the square footage of the school?
Yes.
So my question is, I think, Tony, you mentioned seventy three thousand and then one says sixty seven, so that's about ten percent, is that, is that bad?
The school, uh, uh, thinks that's how much, sixty seven thousand? Well, I probably.
We, we would have, it, that is probably tough, tough, you know, typo in the report, cause we matched up to what Billy and Tony.
Yeah, the introduction says sixty seven, thirty five.
I probably counted, i- i- when we submit the building codes, they make us count the canopy out front, you know, any little walking surfaces and things like that nature, but, but your, but that covers hardscape.
Yeah, we.
That you're covering anyway.
So.
So we've got, we're duplicating a little bit.
I, I'm thinking of this building footprint only, and what he's kind of caught talking about the building, I'm considering sidewalks and other hardscapes, impervious surfaces that are also included, so that's all taken into account, so it's, it's, we're doing the same thing as.
Yeah, some of the square footage is, is stacked.
Yeah, yeah.
Outside as hard surface.
Yeah.
You've probably already done this, but, uh, you might want to keep in mind and tell the state about how much traffic will fill on that road in the coming. So the, the stop, the stop by the cell station, we've had complaints come this, to me before about being congested here in school, everybody going to work and most people coming out, there have been coming intermittently, uh, so that might might have to change at some point.
But there is some, there is some discussion with actually widen fifty two, you know, it widened out to, out to the, to the new entrance to the depot, sure, the back entrance to the depot, and it's talking about wide now out to the, to the, so I'm sure a project like this will maybe, um, see those fossils a little bit for sure, cause you're right, this is gonna be a lot of traffic to do down here actually, yeah.
Okay, since I didn't ask anybody else.
Well, I was gonna say, I was thinking about that water line, if you go to Old Fish, I know there's eight inch water line here, cause it goes through my back front. And I, I, I've heard of this, but, yeah, so it's less than a mile, there's eight inch water line. It's your, it, true, that is, well, I mean, if you please, if you need wrenches, so, maybe that's a soup.
I think you're talking about, you're talking about on the north side of, of.
Yeah, blue and green.
I think they're, they're close from that sixth line that runs on this side fifty two.
Well, it's an eight inch line, it goes through, cause I watched him put it in and I acted, see how it went?
I'm gonna take you off.
Oh, I appreciate you, thanks, appreciate you.
Okay, I'm the other six, that's pretty good.
Yes, thank you.
So this is the Palisades Distillery, Tyler, do you hear me? All right, probably around a little late for traffic, um, so they're still flooding along just like the other plans for the distillery down there. Um, or why don't you just bring us up to speed? Where you're at, but, based on last time you were here.
Uh, yeah, I'm Tyler Dixon, I'm with Carmen out of Lexington, um, civil engineering, landscape architecture firm. We have developed mine for Palisades, which is a craft distillery, um, going to, and to, uh, Lexington Road address.
So I don't think last time we had some, we had a kind of a little one there, yes. So we kind of worked on, we kind of got cleaned up a little bit, like, I had some things thought on that, I, I guess I want to talk more about this. This letter, demo, whatever it is, is that what you generated this or somebody else?
I did.
Yeah, it just looks to me like there's a lot of, many things that are still unknown yet.
Yeah, there's, so there's several.
Talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, um, so the owner's vision is to do as much of this distillery as he can off the grid, so to speak, so, um, not tapping in, well, relying as little as possible on grid utilities, uh, water, lighter, um, sewer, he doesn't really have anywhere to tap into without building some pump stations, so, uh, we did a subject evaluation this Friday morning with, um, the health department, and, uh, they should have their, um, lines, others, uh, tomorrow. Soil looked good while we were out there, so I don't see that being a problem. Uh, he's drilled several locations for wells, and since the last time we met, um, they have found a location that's producing a fair amount of water for him to use, um, for operations and also, uh, part of, you know, the facility, um, well, um, there you can see a cooling water retention basin, and so that's part of the, the process. Uh, he's gonna use that on strictly for, um, basically cooling water, like he's, he's taking the high water and they have these dissipating jets and, um, it cools the water down and then it recy, it's kind of a closed loop, loop system. That's about as much as I know about it, it's not really.
This is part of the dissipation process?
No, it's, no, it's just part of the, uh, uh, it's not actually water goes into the product, so to speak. It just helps make energy, uh, consumption.
Cause your needs is back to back to, back to whatever you need to start tools.
And so there are gonna be some evaporative losses in that cooling system, so that well water can help with parts that's, um, retention pond. Also have a line going to, there's a, um, last time we were here, we were looking at combining the firewater and that retention pond, and now we're just gonna do a separate tank for that, so it's.
How big is that?
I don't know, so what are you talking about? You pulled this out of the river, I take it, on the side.
Well, it's well water.
Well water.
Well water.
It's a really well. Already got the well?
It's already. Already, yeah. Got it located and, um, I don't have the numbers with me, but I wanna say it was producing, I mean, it was, it was a good amount, thirty five gallons a minute or something like that. But you will also use, um, for the distillery, just hand sinks.
Right, we're just talking at the same time, how big is the water tank? For, uh, the.
Uh, so the, the dimensions are on, on, uh, but the, it's a two hundred and sixteen thousand gallon tank, um, so the straight wall side of it will be thirty feet in height, and then it has a cone on top. It's worth saying about four feet, four five feet, so that is apex, thirty five feet off the ground. There'll also be a, you know, four foot of safety rail around the top, so, whatever, thirty four to forty five feet to that top of rail. Uh, but we've positioned the tank, um, kind of up against a, an existing maturity line, uh, that's to help screen, um.
I'll see that on the point.
It's not, it's not shown on the registry, right?
No, it's not shown on the registry.
Yeah, that's it.
Does that mean tank could follow that?
Yeah.
So that's, that's, that's our body of water, right?
Yeah.
Virtual water, so that, that capacity, I guess, is enough to be calculated and make sure.
Right.
The distillery.
Yeah, the finished floor elevator, the distillery, it's got it, uh, nine ninety three point five, and then, yeah, the MEP, there's figured out that, um, that head, that would need to be for gravity, and so the tank is about, I think, ten or so feet higher, um, as far as, you know, bottom of the tank, there's an extra ten feet of water required for it, um, it was actually now minus ten feet of that tank, and that extra ten feet is to help with the pressure and, and it's, um, you know, excess, um, water that could be used. And the fire pump, um, that's, um, the, it's basically like a, um, trailer, like a, um, semi-trailer. One that will contain the pump, the tank, you know, over there, and it'll feed into the, um, the distillery.
So the basin you're talking about is like heat exchanger, where's that at?
Um, so that's planned, that's, it's, um.
It's all named, but it's over. It's all on this one?
No, it is, it's kind of looks like a fifth or.
Doesn't say retention?
That is, yeah, cooling water retention basin, I should say.
And that can be pumped back as makeup water?
Right, yeah.
Is that underground by?
Yeah, everything will be underground.
Like the mesh water, stuff like that, is that all coming out the same way?
Yes, yes.
So you have, sure you have a plan to filtration, what kind of system?
Yeah, you're just gonna have to, I mean, for his.
I guess, my main question is, I all sound great and you got a good plan, but I just don't think you're ready for a, for a site without, a full site without a plan, even a site without a plan approved, um, just because you still have some of these unanswered engineering questions. So what is, what is, what is to ask, what is the need, what do you want to do?
Uh, this is, he's wanting to move forward with this, as quite clearly.
And, and I don't think, I don't think any, I don't think you need all program to look forward with anything as far as engineering work that needs to be done, some of the, you know, final decisions, uh, that need to be made, that, that kind of thing, um, I think when you get ready to start doing the dirt, to start building buildings and, and, and put them on the site, that's one of this more, when your construction arms are done, probably really a site.
Does this not go through an engineering review?
Well, no, it does, it does, well, it can, if we feel like there's a problem with it, we have, you know, we're already gonna, gonna send it out to a third party engineer. We don't, we don't wanna do that, now, this is a very new project, right, so that's possible, but, uh, really, your construction arms, if you do approve of a site without a plan, that's your approval, go start doing the dirt, right, so if you're ready to do that, jump, where, where you are, yeah.
This is, this is more, so, yeah, the.
So he, he, he just needs, I think he just needs to keep trucking.
Yeah.
Um, and keep doing what he's doing, and he, and get some more of this stuff, turn it up a little bit, then we'll bring it back to this board and, and, and you and I can talk in the meantime and say, we got this, we got this, we're ready to go, I'll start doing dirt in February, we need to go again, where, whatever the case may be.
Yeah.
Um, and we just probably just need to revisit.
Okay, yeah, that, that's fine, yeah, uh. Uh, Lexington, uh, you know, she, her, to, for, like, that word's development plan, and then it goes through a full engineering review, uh, it's a CD.
I, I think we, I think we want to see the, the construction. The whole, the whole point now, you're not in the sales, well, actually, I need, how does he feel, he speak for him?
Okay.
Uh, and if I need something to sit it out to a third party, I'll make that decision, but, um, yeah, I think we're, I don't think we need to go on anything nice and we'll pay for this until we get some more information submitted and what. But, yeah, that, whatever, the right way to do that is, is fine, I just, I don't think y'all wanna devote on anything tonight.
The question is too, I have, uh, how close of a river is this? Is it about a river?
Uh, so turn around, Robert, he.
It's really safety conscious, we need to make sure it's, we have to look at.
This thing is up on top of, you can't see even part of the river, unless you walk right over there.
Of the elevation?
Cause of the elevation, you go up, you go up a pretty steep, I don't know what the elevation change is, but all this road coming in is down that river, but not ever, but it's, it's in flood. You come around and go up this drive right here and circle back, and this, am I pretty close right there?
Right here, it's.
Yeah, all this is up on top of the, it's, it's, it's up on top of the. Good place.
Is your question, well, I run off, so we're here.
Well, it's, it's obviously about, you know, water, seven years.
So.
Uh, this, that's all.
Now, that's a, that's an excellent point, but, um, so there, there are three warehouses planned for this project, but in future phases, and that'll be your, uh, distill spirits, uh, storage warehouses and, um, you know, the, the requirements now are, you have to be able to contain everything that's in that, um, building plus hundred year storm, plus firewater, uh, if it's sprinkled, which these aren't gonna be sprinkled, but, um, you know, there's, um, there's regulations that we'll have to meet.
He was on the plan, it shows you, on the plan, it shows the container area for the rig house, if it wasn't for the fire, there are plenty of grains towards that container area.
For the distillers, I'm not.
The big, the big one, the big one, this would show it.
So the, um, portion of the distillery will be sprinkled, um, but there's not any requirements that, um, that, that's why we maintain that, because there's really not a lot stored inside the distillery itself, it goes into barrels and then goes, you know, into a rig house, and that's where you have like the big volume. Yeah, and then, so since those are, are, are future phase, we haven't worked through all the designs, so, yeah, we're just focused really on the distillery portion of it now, and, um, you know, all the mechanical, uh, all these unique things that the owner is wanting to do as far as, um, engineering. So, but there's, all the, the energy consultants are on board now and have been working, um, you know, over the past month or so, so we can start to develop some of these, um, you know, kind of more detailed questions. Um, I just don't know enough about some of the systems to speak, you know, uh, confidently on them, it's just, um, there's an anaerobic digester, which essentially deals with all the, you know, the spent grains and, um, it will produce, uh, methane that he'll be able to use for heat, um, it will, um, produce some, um, water that he can introduce back into the cooling water pond. Um, and also, uh, basically what, what's left over, he'll be able to use, it's biochar, he'll be able to use for, uh, essentially man's soils and things like that.
Are you gonna be throwing it all grain over property?
He's gonna grow as much as he can, yeah, he wants to do it all, but, I mean, that's, I don't, you know, whether or not he, he can do it all there, time will tell. Yeah, he, uh, wants to do as much as he can on the land, uh, that he has, you know, so it's truly a Madison County born, um.
Well, it's, uh, my fault is that if you decide you wanna go ahead and pull this from our tender, then, uh, if you're ready next month, then we can vote, we can vote on it.
Okay.
If we table it, we, if I want to table it, uh, we'll have to do something at our next, this, we need part, something.
You probably just pull it.
Well, yeah, that's just a little bit, yeah.
And then, uh, you can keep in contact with them.
We'll bring it out, you're ready, okay?
Uh, so, yeah, we'll just move forward with basically, um, construction documents and what we feel are the point to, to turn it over to a contractor.
And we'll let the record show that, uh, you agree your application to your, at, at, at today.
All right, Tom.
Thanks for our agenda, the road change, R, R seven and R C seven, and UC one for nineteen seventy eight, Blueboro. Do you think you're ready to enter?
Good evening, President Wurley, McBrer Law Firm, two oh one East Main Street, Lexington, uh, here on behalf of, uh, the advocacy property owners through their purchaser developer, Andrew Luxon, who'll, uh, testify here shortly. If you let me pass around, you've gotta add, this is what, what I think, you, by the way, did it, it's a lot for you. So just real quickly, right, right in front of you is the conceptual plan, put together by Advocates Engineering and Dwayne Wheatley's here. Uh, if you got any questions for him as we move forward, and then the next, uh, items, I just pulled this off the PBA, just to give you a kind of a, a better idea exactly where the property is and kind of how it's situated with the, the surrounding properties. But I think, uh, what, uh, Andrew's gonna testify to, and then also Mr. Jahad Alani with Vision Engineering, um, uh, a couple of things, why this is in agreement with the common sense plan, it'd be a good project, uh, but I'd like to highlight that I think you're factually, uh, as related to the common sense plan, it's within one of your identified critical areas, between northern Madison County and the I seventy five and US twenty five corridor. Um, and your future language map, uh, identifies this area, uh, both within your urban corridor, uh, and situated in a, in for single family development, uh, which is what is being proposed, a, a single family development.
Not moving.
Not moving.
It does say moving.
It says moving, right?
Page one, uh, at page number three, it says resolve the problems for multi-family residential development.
The application is spread, yes.
Is that, is that the finding effect? The proposed finding effect?
Um, I said the application, right here.
Okay, is that the proposed finding's effect? That, we use that.
Right here, number three.
Y'all, that was not, that was important, we can catch wings.
That's what I think, that's not right.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out, that, that is a mistype there, that should have said for single family. On the formal application itself, it states the proposed zoning classification would be single family residential, you see.
What numbers are on yours?
The last sentence burnt, and the proposed finding's a fact, which. So, I'll tie it up in a minute, the, uh, so with, with that, with that cleared up, again, your, your proposed, uh, the future language map recommends single family residential along this corridor, it's entirely within the urban corridor, uh, so it's where you wanna see this type of development, and it situates partially along the rural corridor, which you say you would like, uh, more, less dense residential development like single family. So I think when you put all that formula together, uh, it kind of says that this is exactly what your common sense plan would like. But to get into that with a little more detail, Andrew, if you'll step over here, if you'll give your name and record to me.
Yes, please thank your name and address.
Andrew Luxon, four eighty Hagan Road.
Please write by, and short tell, for the, for the, tell, what you.
I did.
Okay, sorry.
Uh, Andrew, are you a developer here in Madison County?
Yes.
And do you operate under Luxon Contracting and various other entities?
Yes.
How long you been developing?
Uh, say over, you know, different scales, probably over the last ten years.
And, uh, this conceptual drawing that the commission has, is this what you asked, uh, Advocates Engineering to prepare for you?
It is.
Uh, for this own change, and this is the property that, uh, that you seek as own change for?
Yes.
Uh, do you have any familiar with the property?
Uh, just been, been here in Madison County, born and raised, um, knew, had some family ties, uh, some friends of family to this projected property, so that's how we love it.
And, uh, are you currently in contract to purchase that property?
Yes.
Um, currently, the property is, is it active, ongoing right now?
I think so, if it's, um, used for cattle and maybe other various farming.
But in your, in your understanding, your communications with the current owners, they're either ready to, to.
Move on from those operations or move them out. Yes.
And your understanding is that this property fronts a major transportation arterial, uh, being the Blueboro Road, six twenty seven?
Yes.
And that is between, uh, Richmond and Clark County and northern Madison County?
Correct. Correct.
Andrew, I'm showing you and for your own purposes, the future land use map from the comprehensive plan. And, uh, in your understanding of this, as I point to you, this black line around here, uh, this property will lie entirely within the, uh, uh, urban corridor. Within that black line, it's right here. And, uh, that this color around, this yellow coloring shows that it is recommended for single family development, do you see that?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, in your experience as a developer in Madison County, do you believe, uh, based on the topography, the available services and infrastructure and the current housing market, that this property is well suited for your proposed development?
I didn't.
And I'm showing you this, no, it's in the packet, uh, Madison County Utilities, you received that from Jared Webb at Madison County Utilities, did you not?
That's correct.
And that states that, uh, water can be brought, uh, on a property for both hydrants and for, uh, usage, uh, for the proposed lots?
Yes.
And then, uh, talking of, uh, infrastructure, uh, you've told to me, and if you'll tell the commission, that you don't intend to try to run sewer of the property, that it's not in the area. But what your plan is and how the process will be for septic?
Sure, so I think, uh, typical what you'd see in many, uh, residential developments out in the county, um, you know, we're, we're looking at one acre minimum lots, they're not all going to be that, it'll be a various, you know, variation of, of lot sizes based on terrain, uh, but we will be utilizing septic systems that would be installed by the, uh, contractors, you know, per each project as the homes are built on the lots we develop.
Well, that, I don't know, file this finding of fact, it says, uh, new, uh, they're considered high density, it is not high density.
Well, we, we can, I think what I'm trying to articulate there is where it's in your urban corridor, Northern Madison County, it would nor, it would call for high density. But where it sits on a rural corridor lot, then it goes further to say, but even that, it will be low density. So we're saying this could accommodate more, but this is actually more appropriate as a single family property. So I, I certainly would work with Jubal and, and, and doctor that up if you think that that's not clear or, or mistaken. What our issue here, this is, we are certainly not seeking a high density development here, I think acre lots is about as low density.
Yeah, that's why, I mean, that's why I'm saying.
Yeah, no, thank you, we'll, we'll take a look at that. So finally, just to wrap up, as for questions and testimony from you, Andrew, and then if, unless anybody has any questions directly to you, uh, in your, in your opinion, as a developer, and, and your goal, this is capable of development as proposed and is ready for that development now?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So, as always, with any development, uh, particularly on, uh, more rural roads, uh, even though Boonsboro is certainly a very developed road, uh, at this stage, we're just talking zone change, we're not talking building, encroachment permits onto the road. But those are questions that are always raised anyway, and so we wanted to get out ahead of that a little bit and take a look at the traffic situation. And whether this would affect, uh, traffic on Boonsboro Road. So if I could ask, uh, Jahad Halani from Vision Engineering.
Who said your name, address, or?
Uh, Jahad Halani, one twenty eight, the east run, exit point, contact four zero five, one seven.
Please raise your hand, just want to tell truth, hope so, it's not.
Mr. Halani, are you the principal engineer of Vision Engineering?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, Vision Engineering is part of your own general civil work, hydrology work, but also you all perform traffic impact studies.
Correct.
And were you asked to, uh, do a traffic impact study on this particular?
Yes, sir.
Oh, right, um, if you would, like, uh, in briefly, um, kind of through the executive summary, describe your, uh, findings about how this would impact traffic, uh, on Boonsboro Road, both at the proposed, uh, new, uh, intersection and then the closest intersection nearby.
Yes, sir, well, I did the, the, uh, traffic study along Boonsboro Road, uh, and, uh, and did the traffic count on September twenty five. And traffic count was done, uh, uh, during AM peak hour between, uh, the seven thirty to eight thirty and PM hours between two forty five to like five thirty. And our finding, based on, uh, the number of single family units, we took all this nu- number of units with the IT manual, it kind of generate number of trip, uh, and the AM number of trip and the PM, uh, traffic that we basically counted, uh, during that day. And, uh, we estimated what's going to be the level of service in year twenty thirty five at the full buildout condition of the site, with one percent growth of the background traffic between twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five. And we evaluated based on whatever we had in the section, the new entrance, probably the level of service, and also what's going to be the level of service on, uh, Boonsboro Road. And the level of service is going to be insignificant impact, or the delays on, on the main road.
So, uh, based on your findings, then this will have, uh, just to be clear, the, uh, minimal impact, uh, or non-material impact to the level of service of both Boonsboro Road, the proposed intersection and the existing near by intersection by the Dollar General.
Correct.
All right, uh, also, uh, would you, uh, point out that you studied the, uh, sightlines in your, uh, in your traffic study?
Yes, sir.
Would you tell us about the minimum traffic sightlines and how both east and westbound are all within compliance?
Yes, sir, uh, basically, uh, Transportation Cabinet has, uh, guideline about, uh, uh, side distance based on the speed limit of the roadway and, uh, the type of the roadway, which is an arterial roadway over here, which will require minimum four ninety five feet of side distance and the site, the location of the proposed entrance exceeds that requirement.
Thank you, and then, uh, lastly, when we talk about, uh, uh, improvements to the road that may be required, um, in either an AM or PM peak hour, uh, uh, at fu- at full buildout, do you believe that there's potential that a traffic lane or a turn lane may ultimately be warranted there?
Yes, sir, uh, at full buildout for the PM peak hours, as part of the encroachment permit, this traffic study will be submitted with its, to the Transportation Cabinet. And left turn is warranted for, uh, for the traffic movement.
So, but in your experience though, this as based on a basic process, that would all be worked out within, with the tra- uh, State Highway Traffic Engineer as to when and where that may be required?
Yes, sir, the timing of the left turn move, uh, left turn improvement, left turn pain will be dedicated by the number of units and when it's need to be installed.
And that's something that then would be worked out amongst the state and the developer as to how, how that needs to start.
Correct, as part of the encroachment permit.
All right, so just to finally wrap up, your traffic study shows a, uh, a minimal non-material impact, uh, to the road, but at final buildout, there may be some offsite improvement right there at the new intersection being proposed, uh, that the developer would work with the state through future processes.
Correct.
All right, thank you, Mr. Halani. So, I think, uh, the test one there, um, is, uh, this is, this would be a safe development, uh, it's a development that is, uh, meets your comprehensive plan. In fact, being particularly that it's situated in our corridor, Northern Madison County, uh, it's along a rural corridor, uh, between, uh, uh, Clark County and Madison County, where development is moving now, and, uh, your comprehensive plan asks you to follow movement that way. You all just recently approved a, uh, similar project, uh, just down the street, close, a little closer to the interstate, next to the Traditions, as a UC one development, uh, so we're tied to follow, that trend is what's respectful to the area. Uh, mainly, I think the, the biggest issue is when you look at your future land use, uh, plan on, uh, your comp plan, which of course is not a, uh, it's not meant to be a shadow, but a guide, but it's a pretty good guide when it specifically calls for this type of development, uh, at that, at that particular area. So, uh, with that, uh, uh, you know, I think particularly this focuses in an urban corridor, it encourages new residential development in areas with, uh, current planned transportation, um, and, uh, then some of the elements of your comprehensive plan, uh, to, uh, encourage, uh, and develop around existing developed areas, uh, so I believe this is in agreement with comprehensive plan, uh, we would appreciate approval and, uh, ask for any questions that you have in, in any discussion. And then finally, I'm sorry, the, the packet that you have that I was just going through, this was my one other copy, but I'm going to give this to, uh, as, as the record. And I'll be submitting this as evidence in the record. It's just shy of one sixty, it's a hundred and fifty nine plus or minus.
Everything that's on the deed is part of your application?
Yes.
Everything is there.
Everything, yes, that's correct.
Yes, sir.
One eighty, one eighty. One sixty.
Dwayne, you already slid the approximately twenty acres covered.
That's the intersection of the front there.
Look like there's exclusion.
Okay, they, so yeah, they're, they're, they're keeping, they're keeping.
They're not asking for a math limit that, that contains property then?
What's that?
They're not asking for a math.
No, just a hundred and fifty nine plus or minus acres that we've put in the application is what we need, looking for math.
Is this the twenty acres here?
Yeah, I believe so, Dwayne, you want to come up here?
I guess part of the, right?
Yes.
That's right, that's the retains twenty acres. So, go ahead here, uh, swear your name.
Yes, uh, we, uh, Mr. Brandon Burke, uh, Carter, he's in attendance here tonight, man, he's retaining the twenty acres that we cut out of the.
So, what you, what you see as the plotted out acreage is the?
Hundred and fifty nine plus, just shy of one sixty.
You have, you have, if you have a contact, sure, let's get in contact.
Yes.
How does it describe what's being sold?
Jubal, I don't have it in front of me.
It's the hundred and fifty nine change.
There's some sort of specific description.
There is, that's all.
Yeah, there's a specific description and we can, and we can get to the, to the level of detail, Dwayne can even go further into what's plotted out.
Does the deed, does the deed that was submitted with the application, uh, include that in the acres?
It's, it's the current vested deed of record, so it would be included, so.
So we're taking on the records.
That it is not the entire deed, right?
Yeah.
That's what's shown, right?
Or do you have a, a, a overlay map with the current zone for this area that goes beyond, uh, tables of property?
It's, that's already done, sir. That part has already been dated out to me.
I guess I'd ask you to point out where the, where's this?
About twenty acres.
On the front.
Sorry, this will be, uh, Mission Woods, uh, Seven Oaks, Tahoe Way, this is country, which is state, um, that's to the east, north and east of this, of this track, this property here would be Warrior Trace. And. This property is the property that y'all just rezoned, it's not showing up off here yet, this is Boone Village. All the yell that you're seeing is, um, other, um, developments, this is a set of the trace here. Again, here's the proposed property here, so anything you see, uh?
So, again, the, uh, one to up the one down.
Again, here all the order of Boonsboro, Mission Woods, Seven Oaks, yeah. And again, here is, uh, this is that track we just needed. Couple months ago, so that should be yellow too. That was due.
Yes.
And you can see our border over here too, this brownish line right here. This, this property's here and this is within, is in the urban border.
I'm going to have, I guess, more than anything, um, y'all talked a lot about traffic and, and some of the justification for change. Uh, could you state your finding of fact, just so we can hear the record of, of one discussion about other challenges, real finding of fact?
Sure.
Just make a clear statement of finding of fact.
Sure, uh, the property, uh, is entirely within the urban corridor. Um, the, uh, Northern Madison County and the urban corridor particularly, uh, call for, uh, where the comp plan calls for development. The future land use map specifically calls for single family development on this exact site, um, and so we're dividing for, uh, single family development, uh, urban corridor, corridor for single family development within an urban corridor, which the land use map particularly calls for. Okay, it's suitable, suitable, there we go.
Thoughtful is always like commands.
That's true, where, where it is, is suitable for it.
Do you have any more witnesses?
That's all I have.
Let me recognize, if anybody's arguing with this, I have to change. Is anyone here? Please come on, call. Send your name and address to our.
I will, Derek, you're over. Um, I'm here on, uh, living here in Richmond, now offices two twelve, North Saster. I'm here on, I'm here on behalf of the joint land.
Not here.
I'm sorry, go ahead. I want to make sure that's where you mean.
But, but he's not testifying.
Uh, for the record, they don't oppose.
Who, who are you representing?
So here on behalf of, uh, Alan and Teresa Long, who own two hundred and thirty three acres to the east of the property.
You can look at that screen up there, this is the subject property, and I believe this is Alan's farm right here, is that right?
Tim Brandenburg, who owns that side up here. Right? Hundred forty one acres, to the, immediately to the west of the property. So, in terms of Mr. Brandon Burke, they're both concerned about the development, manner of development. And both Mr. Worley and I were schooled by Mr. Thomas before the meeting. Mr. Brandon Burke was concerned that he raises cattle on this property, and he was concerned about a fence that was, there was a fence between the property, and he was concerned about putting a fence there that was suitable to turn cattle. And Mr. Thomas has informed us that that's in the regs, that that's required unless it's waived. And so Mr. Brandon Burke obviously used the property to complete that requirement. Now, to the, to the east of the property, the lawn property, you'll see this area right here, as with many tracks in the northern part, uh, and in the river, close proximity, the Kentucky River, um, you'll see the visions that are there, and that, you'll look at the development plan, you'll see culs, sacks that go out of each of the fingers. Uh, this is the area that we're, the homes are very concerned about because it's very steep top graphically. The beach in the creek that goes, uh, traverses through their property, so. This will be, um, on notice of the development plans for it, so that we can work with Mr. Wheatley and Mr. Worley, um, to adequately ensure that the, the volume of water doesn't, doesn't increase, uh, and, and change the preparing flow of the water, uh, onto the lawn property, so. We're here to, to say that, that the joint landers don't oppose the rezoning, we just want to, to do the properly in terms to ensure their continued agriculture.
Thank you.
Of course, Mr. Brandon, that will come later, later, different stories will be addressed later when we do that.
Yeah, mine are black.
So we, we'd expect you to stay on top of that.
We will stay on top of that. Thank you, Judge.
Any other questions to bring in?
You may ask to speak.
Turn back just a little, it's here to address this issue.
Make sure we get that, and if you can, if you have any other second concerns too?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, yeah, obviously, the fence situation is part of your regulation, and uh, my client, no objection to a fence anyway, but if Mr. Brandenburg doesn't waive his, you know, right there, then the fence will, will remain. And then uh, Mr. Wheatley and the other engineer involved will have to submit plans, uh that Berd will review. Uh, you all will have an opportunity to, to make uh final decisions on, that would have to show that any uh created water runoff is handled appropriately, doesn't adversely affect. And then one thing about too, Mr. Pennington, just to something that you raised in the proposed findings in fact, where it does say new development in the area should consider high density, um, I think what I was pointing to, if you'll look at that last line, then it says low-density residential, pockets of neighborhood commercial will be most appropriate along rural corridors.
Yeah, I read that.
That extends from Northern Madison County at I seventy-five to Boonsborough, Clark County, so I think that calls for this almost exactly.
Yeah, I read that. It just, I, I didn't underline that last. It just, Mr. Wheatley, you get the sense that one line is saying high density, and they will not, you know.
I, I, I understand, and I think you're right, I probably need to extend my underline the whole way or start it on the same.
Any other questions? If not, I'll look the floor for a motion.
Uh, I make a motion to recommend to the business court, we approved the zone change for nineteen seventy-eight, River Road Bridge in Kentucky, uh, four, four seven five from RC seven, UC one, uh, based off the uh, the property does comply with the comprehensive plan for well-inlay within the urban and rural corridor. Uh, Northern Madison County is called for, these development areas in the county, as well as the main map does recommend this property or this land area is good for uh single-family development.
Let me, let me jump in there real quick, and just one technicality, you said from RC seven to UC one, it's actually RC seven and R seven. The portion of this property is.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, would you want to make that correction to your motion?
Yeah, we can correct that, I want to make the, the classification correction, I'm sorry, that we rezoned the property RC seven and R seven to UC one.
Thank you.
End of discussion. I would like to say, I think on this commission's set of form, and we've always looked at six twenty-seven as one of the main corridors for development. Uh, we didn't have a holdup based on some traffic at I seventy-five, because we get traffic on I seventy-five off the ramp back over the interstate. And state department took care of that for us, and uh, and of course, it's handy to have, to have that in the school and everything. There's going to be a lot of people needing schools and your homes. I just want to put that in there, because I'm pretty much, I guess, a long student, I didn't hear. And I've been waiting for a long time for the second. As long as the second, that discussion, end of discussion. That's not what I'm about.
Very accurate, the bridge, yes, your class?
Yes.
Ron Adams?
Yes.
Billy King?
Yes.
Shannon Pennington?
Yes.
Robert Farm?
Yes.
So this is the regulation, rather than the main commission, the fiscal court, it approved this, it'll have to go through good readings. The fiscal court will have the final say, uh once they have their second reading, it's a fact, it's a monthly approval.
Okay, thank you all. Thank you, Bert.